All the members.
President.
All the women.
Present.
All the women.
Present.
All the men.
Here.
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 All the women.
Here.
Excuse me. All the men.
Here.
All the men.
Present.
All the men.
Here.
All the women.
Here.
All the men.
Here.
14 present and one absent.
Thank you. And for the record, Alderman Giacomi had a family issue that came up that's going to keep him from being able to be here this evening. It came up at the last minute. So with that, we'll get right to the business tonight. We've gotten, you should have in front of you, all of the two budgets for the capital plan and the operating budget, along with the executive summary. And with that, we'll turn it over to Mayor O'Larry to do the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few prepared notes here. And then after I give my introduction, I'll turn it right over to Sarah Gary. So what you have before you tonight is the eighth budget prepared by this administration. The total budget before you tonight is an amount of $415.4 million, which represents less than a 1% increase over last year's. I give enormous credit to our budget advisor, Sarah Gary, our finance director, Mike Le Blanc, Mac DeMac, George DiAgostino, and David Leepore from our office. These are the people who make up the CCOC, which is the Cost Containment and Oversight Committee, which meets every Wednesday with the department heads in the city to discuss items such as reviewing personnel requisitions, reviewing purchasing requisitions, weekly updates on tax collections, review of police, fire, and all other departments' overtime expenditures, review of the capital budget, and other fiscal issues that impact the city. This CCOC is an exercise that I learned from the State Oversight Board. Once again, it provides the department heads an opportunity to meet with our office each and every Wednesday and to discuss where the city is on any given week during the fiscal year. It's a practice, I think, that is, gives our, not only does it give our department heads a full understanding of where their individual departments are each week, it also allows them to communicate and work with each other. This practice builds relationships between the departments and our management team and provides a weekly heads-up if there's a hint of any budget-related issues. I'm especially proud of our city employees this year. And I really want to take a moment to recognize the sacrifices from our city employees this year. The police, fire, blue collar nurses, all sacrificed and took away fees in the first year of their contracts. The white collar contract is still in negotiations. And as you know, the schoolteachers and administrators' contracts went to binding arbitration. The arbitrators awarded a wage freeze for the teachers in the first year of the contract and a 1% increase to the administrators in their first year of their three-year contract. Their three-year contract gave them a total of 4.7% increase over the life of that three-year contract. The Medicare enrollment program initiated by this administration with the help of this Board of Aldermen saved the taxpayers of Waterbury $10 million last year alone. The growth of the grand list this administration has achieved in the area of economic development over the past seven years has generated $17 million in revenue. What you have before you tonight is a budget that I've mentioned has grown less than 1% over this current fiscal year. As a matter of fact, over the last eight years, the average budget growth has been less than 1.2% per year, which is an absolutely amazing statistic for a city this size. I am not aware of any other city that has seen such fiscal restraint and accountability. I fully recognize that our current mill rate is too high. This, of course, is due to paying off the debt built up through years of fiscal mismanagement. This budget will hold the line on the mill rate, hold the mill rate at its current level. But there is light at the end of the tunnel, and this administration continues to pinch every taxpayer penny while at the same time bringing in more companies and creating more and more jobs. The strong fiscal policies in place have led to two bond rating increases awarded to this city over the past seven years. I'm really excited at the direction the city is going. I travel all over the state, as most of you know. I listen to the issues that are facing cities, both large and small, towns, both large and small, throughout the state. You all know what the state of the state is. There's a new governor, and we have high hopes and optimism that he's going to be able to get the Connecticut's fiscal house in order. But it's not going to happen overnight. So we continue to work and move ahead. Governor Lamont has proposed a budget that does increase the city's allotment this year and the education cost-sharing grant, which I am very grateful for. Over the last seven years, you've heard me and listened to me at nauseam, I'm sure, to talk about the fact that the city of Waterbury has not been receiving the appropriate amount of education cost-sharing money over the past seven years. This governor recognizes that and has put a significant amount of money toward the ECS grant for the upcoming fiscal year and the year after. It's a start. It's not exactly what the city of Waterbury deserves, quite frankly, but it's a start and it's an improvement, and we're going in the right direction. There are other very good things happening in Waterbury, and you know that because you're a part of it. And I applaud each and every one of you on this board for your continuing support to this administration. There's amazing things that are going to happen in 2019, calendar year, and moving into 2020, especially in the area of downtown improvements. The capital budget, you will see, will represent continued commitment and infrastructure into our buildings, our roads, and our downtown, and of course, our parks and our quality-of-life related issues. So I'm really excited this year because although we've had a tough year once again, we've seen some cuts in this fiscal year from commitments and municipal aid by the state of Connecticut. We've been able to absorb the cuts without any negative impact on services, no reduction of services, and no increase in the mill rate. So I tell you, I'm just thrilled to be here in front of you tonight, and I'm really grateful for the team that we have in place that have really committed themselves in every way possible to the fiscal approach that we've taken, and that is to watch every penny of our taxpayers' dollars, as we've said, fully recognizing, fully recognizing that the people of Waterbury cannot sustain or they cannot afford to see a mill rate increase in these difficult times, not only for the state of Connecticut, but quite frankly, for the country in itself with all the, all the things that are happening. So I am going to turn this podium over now to Sarah, who will give you a detailed account. I know we don't do much of a Q&amp;A tonight, but I am available for any of you who wants to reach out to me during the rest of this week or next week, have any specific questions regarding the budget. I'd be happy to sit down with all of you or provide the appropriate information to answer any questions you have. Thank you. Sarah?
Thank you, Mayor. Sarah Gary, Policy and Budget Management Specialist for the city of Waterbury. I'm here tonight to explain the mayor's proposed budget for fiscal year '20. Mayor O'Larry used a Budget Development Committee, once again, to advise him during the budget process. And I'd like to take this time to thank the mayor and all of the members of the committee for their dedication and hard work throughout this month's long process. You can see up on the screen the members of the committee from the mayor's office, the mayor, Mac DeMac, George DiAgostino, and David Leepore, myself, I chaired the committee, Michael LeBlanc, and Sherri Coska from the Finance Department. I'd also like to thank all of the city's department heads and their staffs for their efforts to submit responsible budget requests. I'd like to give a special thanks to the photo stat unit of the Town Clerk's Office, specifically Keith Barron, for his help in assembling and printing the budget books that you have before you tonight. I'd also like to thank my T-director, Dan Arapino, for his assistance in putting this presentation together. So to give you a little background of the budget development process, we asked departments to start working on their budget requests for fiscal year '20 back in December of 2018. The departments work on their requests for about a month, and they submit their requests to the Office of Budget Control in early January of 2019. From January through March, the Budget Development Committee reviews the requests and makes funding recommendations to the mayor. We work on finalizing the budget around mid-March, getting these documents ready for tonight and to submit to you by the charter deadline of April 1st. After tonight, the board is required to have two public hearings on the budget, one of which you'll be scheduling at the end of tonight's meeting. The second one is held closer to the date of budget adoption. You will have the opportunity to meet with department heads and ask them questions about their budget, and we'll also be scheduling those over the upcoming weeks. And then ultimately, the budget needs to be adopted by June 7th. Once again, it was a challenging budget development process. The Budget Development Committee began its work with a gap of approximately $11.7 million between expenditure requests from the departments and anticipated revenue for FY '20. On this chart, you can see that the budget would have increased by $11.7 million, or 2.84%, if all department requests were fully funded. In an effort to contain budget growth while still adequately funding the city's obligations and services, the Budget Development Committee cut $8.4 million from these requests, resulting in an increase of $3.3 million compared to the FY '19 budget, or 0.79%. This slide shows you the increases and decreases in the different areas of the budget and how we ultimately arrived at that total increase of $3.3 million. You can see that there's no change to the city's contribution to the Department of Education that will remain at the FY '19 level of $158.4 million. The general fund contribution to the Health Fund is decreasing by approximately $2.3 million. We are seeing continued savings and avoided costs due to the Medicare Enrollment Project and other cost-saving initiatives in the Health Fund. We also expect the fund to benefit from additional revenue in FY '20 from grant fringe benefit reimbursements. Debt service is proposed to increase by $1 million to continue to support our capital improvement projects on both the general government and education sides. The contingency account will increase by $450,000. The other internal service funds, general liability, workers' comp, heart and hypertension, and various other operating charges are proposed to increase by just under $217,000. Pensionary of the budget is increasing by about $645,000. The Public Safety Departments see total increase of $2.6 million. This is largely because the departments both have two years' worth of general wage increases now built into their budgets. As the mayor mentioned, we're very grateful for the police and fire unions who committed to a wage freeze in the first year of their contract, which was FY '18. So now you're seeing the increases from FY '19 and FY '20 built into these department budgets. The Public Works Department is increasing by about $456,000. The blue collar union contract was recently settled. This is also another union that committed to a wage freeze in the first year of their contract. The first year of the contract is in the current year, in FY '19. So there is a GWI built into the Public Works Departments have a large number of blue collar employees. And one other union, the Nurse Supervisors, also agreed to a wage freeze in the first year of their contract. That was in FY '18. Public Works, one other area we're seeing increased expenses are for the disposal of municipal solid waste and recycling. Recycling is something that in the past we didn't have to pay for and actually received credits, and now because of changes in the markets, we are paying to recycle. And then you could see all other departments increase by about $214,000. So in an effort to control the mill rate, the Budget Development Committee scrutinizes all of the expenditure requests, as the mayor mentioned. When our work was done, we arrived at the budget of $415.4 million. And again, this was $8.4 million less than the department requests. It's important to note that we will continue to scrutinize expenditures throughout the year as we begin FY '20. The Cost Containment and Oversight Committee, or the CCOC, works closely with departments throughout the year. We hope that departments could find savings throughout the year, and this will help us end the year with positive results of operations. And we appreciate all the work that the departments do year in and year out to find cost savings as we move through the year. Some of these major takeaways of this budget are contained in the next few slides. Obviously, the main point that the mayor highlighted is that there is no mill rate increase included in the proposed budget for FY '20. This is the fourth budget that utilizes two mill rates. The real estate and personal property mill rate is proposed to stay at the same level as FY '19, which is 60.21 mills. The proposed motor vehicle mill rate is 45 mills, and that's also the same as FY '19. As you know, state law caps the motor vehicle mill rate, currently caps it at 45 mills, and there were no changes made to that in the governor's proposed budget. The city expects to receive a motor vehicle mill rate cap grant from the state of Connecticut in the amount of $7.7 million. And this makes up for the loss in revenue due to the city not being able to tax motor vehicles at the same level as real estate and personal property. The water and sewer rates are also proposed to remain at the same level as FY '19. The mayor's proposed budget, again, contains funding for the local elderly tax credit program. This program is designed to keep our elderly residents in their homes, and it's at the same amount as FY '19 at a level of $250 for those who qualify. We were encouraged to see another year of grand list growth. The mayor and his administration have worked extremely hard to bring different economic development opportunities to the city, and we had grand list growth of about $57.2 million on the October 1, 2018 grand list. This allowed us to increase the real estate and personal property revenue by $2.7 million compared to FY '19, and an increase in the motor vehicle tax revenue of about $173,000. Again, our total budget proposal is $415.4 million, represents an increase of 0.79% compared to the current year adopted budget of $412.1 million. We see continued stability in the city's fund balance of $23.4 million. This has allowed us to continue to budget a use of fund balance as a mill rate mitigation tool. We budgeted a $3 million use of fund balance once again in fiscal year '20. We haven't made use of this in the past, and we would hope that trend would continue in FY '20. Our revenue structure in FY '20 is still heavily reliant on two forms of revenue. 60% of the revenue structure comes from property taxes, and 34% comes from state aid, and these are the same levels as FY '19. State aid in the general fund has remained relatively stable in FY '20. It's increased by about $375,000 compared to the FY '19 budget. We also see stable amount of state aid for capital purposes. In FY '20, we expect $4.9 million in the form of grants from the state for capital projects. Our education cost-sharing grant is included in the general fund in the amount of $113.6 million. This has been our base grant for quite a few years now. There's also the Alliance Grant portion, which goes directly to the Department of Education. This is expected to be in an amount of $29.3 million in FY '20. That would be a total ECS grant of $143 million. We were very happy to see that there's an Alliance Grant increase proposed in Governor Lamont's budget. It would be an increase in the Alliance Grant of about $6.7 million compared to what the department is actually receiving in the current year. That would go a long way in helping the department fund many of their increasing costs, such as salaries, building maintenance, benefits, special education. So we're very hopeful that that will stay in the state budget once it's approved by the state legislature. Now we'll take a little bit of a closer look at the revenue picture. So where does the $415.4 million come from? As I mentioned, we're heavily reliant on property taxes and state aid. Together, they make up 94% of the revenue structure. You can see here that our use of fund balance accounts for 1% of the budget at about $3 million. And there's 1% from the recoveries for fringe benefits and indirect assessments made against the enterprise funds. And then all other revenue accounts for 4% of our budget. This next slide shows how we arrive at the mill rate and the current tax collection that are budgeted. The three factors of grand list, mill rate, and the collection rate, of which we use 96%, provide a net amount of $221.5 million for real estate and personal property tax collections and $19.5 million for motor vehicle tax collections. This is a total of $241 million that we've budgeted for current tax collections in FY '20. A breakdown of the grand list, more information on the grand list can be found on page 28 of your budget book. This next chart shows the changes to the revenue sources other than taxes in fiscal year '20. We expect to see a small increase of about $361,000 in non-tax revenue in FY '20. The following couple of slides show you Exhibit G, which is our state aid schedule. This can be found on pages 69 and 70 in your budget book. The state aid that we included in the proposed budget for FY '20 are the amounts that were included in Governor Lamont's proposed budget. You can see on this page the various formula grants that we receive from the state of Connecticut, and almost all of them are proposed to stay the same, with the exception of an increase of about $330,000 to our motor vehicle mill rate cap grant. This slide shows the reimbursement grants that we receive from the state. Figures on a town-by-town basis are not published for these grants. We budget based on prior year history and the amounts that have been received in the current fiscal year. On this page, you can see that the distressed municipalities' industrial incentive program reimbursement has been budgeted once again in FY '20. This is a reimbursement related to manufacturing real and personal property. It was eliminated in fiscal year '18, and it was not budgeted in fiscal year '19. However, it was actually received by the city in fiscal year '19, and we're budgeting once again for it in FY '20 at a total of $330,000. We also removed the non-public school nurse services grant from the budget because it appeared that it was cut from the governor's proposal, and this is a grant that was budgeted at about $355,000 in the current year. So when you look at all of the general fund state aid, we've budgeted $139.8 million to be received in FY '20 compared to the $139.5 million that we included in our FY '19 budget. This is an increase of approximately $375,000. The next few slides have some more information about our revenue. A lot of this I've already gone through. Just a note on the grand list, again, we saw the growth of $57.2 million. This is 1.34%. Our total grand list value is $4.32 billion. The budget does include a computation for a grand list decrease of 0.5% due to possible adjustments that may be made by the Board of Assessment Appeals for real estate and personal property, and it includes a decrease of 0.15% for changes made to the motor vehicle grand list. Again, there are the two mill rates that are used in the budget, staying the same as the current year, and these rates support service-level appropriations of $415.4 million. The tax collection rate is once again kept at the current estimated rate of 96%. At the proposed 96%, the collection, the one mill is equal to $3.679 million. Again, there are no increases proposed to water and sewer rates. The amounts we've included for state aid are those we've seen in the governor's proposed budget, and we do expect to see an increase to the ECS grant on the Alliance side, which goes directly to the Department of Education. I mentioned earlier that we were able to generate an additional $2.9 million in current tax collections because of the grand list growth. I also mentioned that we had an $11.7 million gap when we started the budget development process. So we were able to add $3.3 million on the revenue side, most of that, $2.9, coming from current tax collections. Therefore, it left us to cut $8.4 million to arrive at the balanced budget. The budgets for the other tax collections, delinquent prior year taxes, supplemental motor vehicle, and the estimates for interest on current and prior year taxes, all remain the same as FY '19. Now that we've talked about where the $415.4 million comes from, I'll explain where it goes and move to the appropriations or the expense side of the budget. The information that you see on this chart comes from Exhibit E, which is on pages 66 and 67 in your budget book. It also includes the allocation of benefits for these departments, and you could see from this chart that over half of the city's budget is spent on education at a total of 55%. 16% is related to our public safety departments. 11% is the retirement board. 7% is related to operating charges, while 6% goes to the Department of Public Works. And then all other departments combined amount to 5% of the city's budget. These next charts, we review every year. It shows the costs of our past fiscal liabilities. We use this to show the impact of employee benefits, which is one of the largest sets of expenditures in our budget. Expenses related to pension and health insurance total $123.7 million in the general fund budget for fiscal year 2020. You could see on the bottom chart that $87.7 million is related to liabilities that were previously incurred. This amounts to about $23.6 mills, and in the absence of these payments, we could have expected to have a mill rate in the area of $36.6 mills. With that being said, we are fully committed to funding our obligations in order to keep the city on sound financial ground. An area of the budget that we consistently look at as we review expenses are positions. And this chart shows our position count that's proposed for FY '20 versus the current year. This budget funds the same number of positions, that's non-education positions, in FY '20 as FY '19, and that's a total of 1,056 positions. We continuously evaluate our staffing needs throughout the fiscal year. As the mayor mentioned, the CCOC reviews personnel requisitions on a weekly basis. We hold positions vacant if we can for periods of time in order to generate budgetary savings. And this budget also contains built-in savings from keeping some positions vacant for certain periods of time in fiscal year '20. The departments have been able to continue to provide high-quality services, many times with bare-bones staffing levels, and we thank them for the work that they do each and every Next, we have some additional information on the appropriation side of the budget. Again, if the budget is $415.4 million, a $3.3 million increase, or 0.79% more than FY '19. If we funded all of the department requests, as I mentioned earlier, we would have been looking at a budget of $423.9 million, and this would have been an increase of 2.84%. The Budget Development Committee was able to identify a reduction The Budget Development Committee was able to identify reductions of $8.4 million in order to contain cost growth and to reach the final proposal of $415.4 million, and again, funding the same number of positions at 1,056. The contingency account has been budgeted at $1.3 million in FY20. This is an increase of about $450,000 compared to the current year. The contingency account is used to cover unanticipated or emergency expenses that may arise during the fiscal year, as well as potential shortfalls in areas such as fuel, utilities, snow removal, and other various expense accounts. Funding for potential general wage increases, if they're awarded in the outstanding contracts that we have, may also need to be funded from the contingency account. We currently have the white collar contract that's outstanding, and fiscal year 20 would be the third year of that contract, and the management union contract is outstanding as well. FY20 would be the second year of that contract. We would hope that the departments can generate some savings to accommodate any increases that may be awarded in those contracts, but we may also need to go to the contingency account to fund increases if awarded. And as I mentioned earlier, the contribution to the Health Fund is decreasing by about $2.3 million. We do continue to see savings from the cost saving measures that have been put in place in the Health Fund, and we anticipate additional revenue in the fund next year as well related to fringe benefit reimbursements from grants. The FY20 budget increases the contribution to the pension plan by approximately $680,000. This is made up of an increase in the annual required contribution of $861,000, as well as a decrease in the debt service contribution of $181,000. And as I mentioned earlier, the debt service contribution is increasing by $1 million. This would be a total contribution of $22 million in FY20, and the city is phasing in increases in debt service over a period of years to support the financing of our capital improvement program. Again, the Department of Education's funding level is proposed to remain the same in FY20 at $158.4 million. We are looking to the Education Department to identify cost-saving measures to manage its budget at the same level as FY19 without reducing any services in the department. The department did receive an additional $392,000 in its appropriation mid-year in the current year, and that was related to funding that the state put into the ECS grant for students displaced by Hurricane Maria. This was a one-time revenue, and it won't be received again in fiscal year 20, and the governor's proposed budget does go back to $113.6 million as the base grant for ECS. And as I mentioned earlier, we are expecting to receive an increase of $6.7 million compared to the current year in the Alliance Grant, and this would go a long way in helping the department fund a number of its expenses. The amount of employee benefit costs that the city pays on behalf of the Education Department is projected at $68.6 million, including benefits. As I mentioned earlier, the city spends 55% of its general fund budget on behalf of So after a number of difficult decisions and a lot of work by the Budget Development Committee, we arrived at a balanced budget in the amount of $415.4 million. There were a number of funding policies that the Budget Development Committee shived to follow during our work over the past several months, and I'll just go over some of those. We were committed to keeping the local property tax burden stable. As the mayor mentioned earlier, we understand that the city has a high mill rate, and we appreciate the sacrifices made by all of our taxpayers, and we wanted to keep the mill rate at the same level as the current year. We wanted to show a continued commitment to the renewal and replacement of the city's water and sewer systems infrastructure. We were able to do that also without an increase to those rates as well. We were continued, we had a continued commitment to include funds for the local portion of the elderly tax credit program in the budget for FY20. This was adopted by this board back in fiscal year 15. We showed a continued commitment to the educational needs of the city's students, as well as a commitment to responsibly fund our obligations to the pension fund, the health benefit obligations, and our other internal service funds. We are also committed to continuing to find meaningful cost-control initiatives to put in place in the health insurance fund. We were committed to funding the contingency account. As I spoke about earlier, it's in the amount of $1.3 million, and it provides protection for any unanticipated costs that may arise during the year. We're also continued, showed a continued commitment to the controlled authorization of bond financing for selective capital projects that have significant benefits for the community. We leverage state and federal grants whenever possible to accomplish our capital projects, and in FY20, we're proposing new bonding in the amount of $9.9 million for the general As you can see here, this is something that we're very proud of, the mayor spoke about earlier. Over the past eight years, the average budget growth is 1.15% per year. Again, we practice fiscal restraint on a daily basis, and we work to keep our mill rate stable, and again, appreciate all the sacrifices made by our taxpayers. The next couple of slides give you a brief overview of the capital budget. You do also have the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 20 to '24 on your desks tonight. For fiscal year 2020, we're proposing projects in the amount of $30 million in the capital plan. $30 million would fund projects in a variety of areas, including streets, parks, schools, public safety and technology, water and sewer infrastructure improvements, as well as a vehicle replacement program. There's a variety of funding sources used to accomplish these projects, including state grants, local capital improvement funds, and local bond authorizations. This chart shows you the projects that are proposed to be funded through bonding. After the capital budget goes through the approval process, we would come back before you for bond authorizations for these projects, and you could see on this chart, it would be milling and paving of our streets that we do each year. That's in the amount of $3 million. Prospect Street Surface Parking Lot in the amount of $2 million, showing an investment in our downtown area. The replacement of elevators in various public buildings in the amount of $3 million. The demolition of blighted properties in the amount of $1 million. The replacement of a fire apparatus, engine seven, at $625,000. And funding for the roof replacement at Generali School at $240,000. This would be 20% of the project cost. 80% would be funded by the state school construction grant program. So a total of $9.9 million is proposed for projects to be funded through bonding. In conclusion, the offices of the mayor and budget control will continue to closely monitor the state legislative session, which is due to conclude on June 5. We'll watch for any changes that are made to state aid amounts, and if anything needs to be changed in our budget, we'll certainly make you aware of that. We'll work to schedule meetings for you to meet with the department heads so that you can ask them questions about their fiscal year 2020 budgets, and we'll also be scheduling the public hearings that are required by charter. And then the budget adoption needs to occur by June 7. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and attention tonight, and we all look forward to working with you on the budget over the next couple of months.
Thank you, Sarah. Nice job. So we will be setting up, the next item on the agenda will be to vote for the first public hearing. In the meantime, probably in the next two or three weeks, we'll come up with a schedule to meet with the department heads, and we'll do it the way we've done it in the past, rather than having a committee, since most people on this board are interested in this process, we'll do it as a committee of the whole. So we'll probably meet two or three evenings, and we'll just schedule a number of the department heads to come in and talk with us. But the next item that we actually have to do tonight is to set a public hearing. We're required by charter to set it no less than seven or more than 14 days from tonight. So the optimal time to do that would be next Thursday, April 11, 2019. I would propose at 6:30 here in these chambers. Is there a motion?
Motion. We hold next meeting on April 11, 6:30 at these chambers.
Second. Motion having been made by Alderman Vrenelli and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Okay. And it's going to be almost impossible to try to schedule something that accommodates everybody, so if you can, that's fine. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The public hearing is set for Thursday, April 11, 2019 at 6:30. And with that, this being a special meeting, there's no further business that can come before us, so I would entertain Alderman Vrenelli a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion seconded by Alderman Lopez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. The meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for coming, and we'll see you a week from tonight at our next regular scheduled meeting. Have a great week.[1760.07][1760.07]